Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Staff Meeting of January the 12th. And good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And I would be remiss if I did not introduce Ms. Jacqueline Panietto. I forgot to do that last time, our clerk for the board. So I wanted to welcome you, and I'm sorry that I missed you.
Thank you.
And so this afternoon, we have a fairly short agenda, but we do have a couple speakers. So we will get right to that. And before we go into our executive session, of course, I will ask our commissioners if they have anything they'd like to say before we go into executive session. And our first item on the agenda is the Solid Waste Management District Year in Review. And I saw Michelle a little bit earlier. Michelle, are you there? Michelle Bolts?
Yes.
Hi. Would you like to start your review?
Absolutely. So thank you, Commissioner, so much for having me. I am going to attempt to share my screen for you. Just a second. Can you see that presentation?
Yes.
I'm gonna try to make it a slideshow. All right. So today, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Solid Waste District for those who are unfamiliar with what we do, and then also highlight some of the major things that happened in 2020 for us. So first, just to give you kind of an overview of the district, and I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Michelle Bolts. I am the Solid Waste Manager for the Hamilton County Recycling and Solid Waste District. And we are a district part of the Department of Environmental Services, which was a much larger department. Our sister agency within the Department of Environmental Services is the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency. They have quite a few more staff members than us. We at the Solid Waste District have six full-time staff members, but we share support staff with the Department of Environmental Services. So our receptionists and our HR and our accountant and even our director and assistant director are all shared with the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency. So our mission is to reduce how much waste goes to the landfill. And we are a state-mandated agency. Every county is required to have a solid waste district or be part of a solid waste district. But we are non-regulatory, which means we cannot tell people they have to recycle or they have to compost. So everything we do is to try to change behavior and encourage waste reduction. We are funded off of tipping fees to the landfill. So for every ton of waste that goes to runky landfill, we receive either $1 or $2, depending on where it comes from. And those funds, according to the State of Ohio, have to be spent on waste reduction purposes. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what some of our highlights of 2020. I'm certainly not going to hit all of our programs. It would be impossible to do that in 15 minutes unless I spoke really, really fast. But there were a few highlights of 2020. Of course, 2020 was a very difficult year for everybody. But I have to say, I am just so proud of our staff. I think that they did such a phenomenal job in pivoting many of our programs, and especially because this hit, COVID last year hit, right at the time that's our busiest time of year. April, we call it Earth Month because it's when Earth Day happens, and pretty much every Earth event is requesting a presentation or a booth from us, and we're just very, very busy during the month of April. And of course, all of that stopped. There were no Earth Day events. It was complete change. So we pivoted along with it, and the staff did just a fantastic job. And they really did become virtuosos, so to speak. We reached still, you know, 2,600 students and teachers virtually. Most of that was actually in the fall, because in the spring, if you can imagine, all of the schools were just trying to scramble and figure out what was happening. We ended up helping 71 businesses through with our technical assistance program. That program's called Let's Stop Waste. And that's where we go into a business or an organization and help them reduce their waste, help them set up recycling, offer best practices. We even provide the containers for the inside to help them set it up, and we help them work with their recycling hauler. And we've worked with a few county buildings as well. Right now, we're working with 800 Broadway. So we'd like to continue to do that, you know, with the new coroner's office or any new building or old building that wants to improve recycling. We're here to help. We also, amazingly, reached 1,343 residents, attended virtual classes with us. So these are from, you know, Recycling 101 to backyard composting to on reducing your food waste. We had, we were so impressed, we actually reached the same number of people that we usually reach in person at our spring composting seminars through virtual classes. So I was just so happy that we were still able to get the message out there. We also had our events. So we had a big compost bin sale that originally was planned for May that we pushed back to the end of June, and we sold the same number of bins that we sold in 2019. So we had 600 new backyard composters. Backyard composting is a fantastic way to reduce how much waste you're creating in your home. You can take your organics and actually create a soil amendment in your backyard. We also operated three yard trimmings drop-off sites through a contractor, which collected 3,800 tons, which was fantastic. Those sites were able to be operated with no contact. People just came up and unloaded their material for the most part. So that was a great service that we could continue providing. We also, in the fall, held a one-day household hazardous waste drop-off event. These are for chemicals that you would have in your home that you, you know, that could be hazardous, that could cause fires or could cause poisonings. So we want to get those out of people's homes. We had over 1,600 households participate in that one-day event that was in Norwood. We also, against all odds, started a few new programs. So we, the 513 Green Workplace Certification is the brainchild of Mary Kropenbaker in our office. She's our business specialist, and she created this sustainability certification program to help recognize and create a network of businesses who are interested in implementing sustainable practices in their business. So these are not necessarily businesses focusing their business on sustainability, but businesses who are interested in recycling more and other energy in those areas. So we actually had that program launched in 2020, just before the stay-at-home order happened, but we were still able to get 11 businesses certified. So I was very impressed with that. We started a new partnership with the Center for Eco-Technology, which is based on the East Coast. And this is exciting because they received a grant from Region 5 USCPA to conduct research on reducing wasted food for commercial businesses. But also, in 2021, they are going to offer virtual trainings for kitchens and other places on reducing your food waste. So we're really excited to bring that into Hamilton County. Finally, we did conduct our first small-scale community composting workshop. We brought in a group called Rust Belt Writers, and they're based in Cleveland, and they are small-scale composting experts. So what I mean by small scale is it's under 500 square feet. So if you can imagine, you know, a community garden having a compost area bigger than maybe your backyard, but not huge. And so we actually had over 30 people attend the workshop, and you'll see in the next slide, I had quite a few projects come out of that. So we're going to continue our partnership with them into 2021. So I also wanted to highlight our waste reduction innovation grants because we added more funds to this grant program in 2020, and we were very successful. We received 14 applications that we funded, and these organizations, you know, several of them were focused on feeding hungry people and rescuing food, which is, this first picture, the picture that you see here is for Churches Active in Northside, Kane. They received a grant to purchase new refrigerator so that they could rescue more food and then get that food to hungry people. We also did, had a grant for the Last Mile Food Rescue, which is funding an app that will help facilitate surplus food donations. So rather than surplus food being landfilled, it will be rescued and given to people in need. In addition, we had Teakin Farm, which is a fantastic organization in Mount healthy, and they pivoted a lot with COVID-19. They're a farm that, you know, teaches about farming and that kind of thing, but they actually pivoted to where they were rescuing more food and feeding because they saw the need of their neighbors go up during the shutdown. So they started rescuing more food and needed help with the infrastructure for that. The other theme of the 2020 grants was reuse. We saw quite a few reuse applications, which was really exciting for us. We had Amago helped them there in Price Hill, and they developed a really cool program they call the Queen City Thingery. It's basically a library for things, for stuff that you might want to borrow, but that you don't want to purchase. So if you're going camping for the first time and you want to just try it out, you can actually go there and just borrow a tent and go and camp, which is, it's a really fantastic idea. It's a way to reduce consumption and how many things are, you know, just left sitting around that you never use. We also helped fund Dress for Success, which is, if you're not familiar, they're also a fantastic organization who helps women who are entering the workforce after a long time or for the first time, who don't have clothes for an interview or for when they first start work and want to look professional. And so they will solicit for gently-used clothing and actually help these women out and help them with their wardrobes, which, you know, might seem like a small thing, but it means the world to these women who are getting out there in the workforce. So we helped them. And then finally, you'll see quite a few composting operations. All of these small-scale composting operations, they came to the workshop. And so we're seeing a lot of energy in the space where we have these small businesses starting and starting to compost on a small scale in Hamilton County, which is great because we have no large-scale composting of food waste happening. So the last thing that I wanted to touch on, and hopefully it works, I apologize if it doesn't, you never know if these videos are going to work, but we did do a video, produce a video with Drive Media in Newport, and the idea was try, was trying to encourage people to recycle more of their cardboard. What we saw in 2020 was that a lot of people shifted, the cardboard shifted from retail businesses, where you get most of your cardboard, to home. So even more people were ordering packages being delivered to their house, and a lot of people were having cardboard. But what we found was, a lot of that cardboard was not ending up in their recycling. They were, it was maybe too big, they just didn't want to break it down and put it in the box. They were maybe leaving things like styrofoam in it that was making it so we can't recycle it. So we were hoping to, with this campaign, encourage people, just recycle your cardboard. It's such a high-value commodity. We actually have paper manufacturers in Ohio who want this feedstock for their businesses. So that was the focus of our campaign. I'm going to try to play it. If you can't hear it, can someone please tell me?
We can't, yeah, can't hear it.
Sorry, you can't hear.
That's okay.
It's only 30 seconds, so.
We get the idea for sure.
Yeah. Well, you can get on our YouTube channel and watch it with the sound. I apologize. Yeah, once it starts, I can't stop it, so. But it was a very successful campaign in trying to get that, and we won't know the numbers on the cardboard for another month or two, whether we actually saw an increase in the cardboard, but we did see a lot of views of the video, which we were happy about. So that's my final slide. I'm open to any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Michelle. When I see the information that you sent, and I thank you so much for sending it in advance yesterday, I was able to look at it, and only thing I can think of is, despite the pandemic, all the work that got done. So you and your staff are to be applauded for that. I was really impressed with the amount of virtual classes you were able to do. And of course, you know, if you need assistance as it relates to the CARES Act, certainly could help with additional assistance. If I'm wrong, I know Jeff will let me know, but I'm just really impressed with the number of virtual classes you were able to do. And I'd like to, to my colleagues, to see if they have any questions or comments, because you do have a representative from the commission. So Vice President Alicia Reese, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to echo that. I appreciate getting the presentation in advance, and I was able to go through it, and you have done some incredible work and just. Can you all hear me still? We're having, I'm in my office, I'm in the county building. I don't know why my internet is not working.
Okay, we heard the first part.
Last week was my microphone, and we got that together. Now it's my internet. We're gonna get it together here. But I just wanted to say, I wanted to echo what Madam President indicated about the great work in this pandemic that you were able to continue to do. But I do want to highlight the pieces on the food, the work you did with the food pantry, especially at a time right now when so many people are suffering as it relates to food. We already had people suffering with that, but then it got even bigger with COVID pandemic unemployment. And I've traveled around helping with a lot of food pantry. So I just want to commend you and your team for what you were able to do with refrigeration to store donated food from the pantry, what you're able to do with Last Mile Food Rescue and Life Food Pantry, and your store of Queen City, being able to help with the refrigeration and storage so that we could make sure the food does not go bad and be able to get them out throughout these pantries, because it definitely is a team effort. And I just wanted to recognize and thank you for the efforts that you all have been a part of, of the team, trying to help people with that. So, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. That is an issue near and dear to our hearts.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. I am actually your new board member, so I look forward to attending my first meeting with you guys. I appreciate the opportunity. So I have two questions. The first one is, I know that you said that you're funded through tipping fees. What is your budget?
So right now, it's usually around $3 million.
Okay. And then secondly, great programming. I mean, you know, you highlighted many of the programs, and I think they're spectacular. But I'm wondering, when it comes to the disposal programs that you have, how do you alert the public to, you know, today is the day you can drop off hazardous waste, today is the day you can drop off, you know, limbs or yard waste? How do you get that message out?
So thankfully, we have a great PR team. We use a few different avenues. We do have a constant contact email list for pretty much every one of our different programs, so residents can sign up if they're interested in household hazardous waste. And then when we have an event, we'll send it out to those residents. We also have social media pages that we put it on, and then we have really great contacts with 48 communities. So we make sure we send it out to them with some sort of shareable graphic that they can post it in their newsletters or on their social media or whatever they have. Unfortunately, I mean, we do press releases, but they don't tend to get picked up very often anymore. So we have had some success with events. If we, if they're an exciting event, such as in 2019, we had a food event that we were able to get some media coverage on ahead of time, like actually go onto a news station. So it just, it just depends on if it's a slow news day and if it's an exciting enough event that they feel like they want to cover it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Looked like Jeff was getting ready to say something.
Good read, Madam President. Actually, I was going to, I was just going to say I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on the presentation itself and the, just the amount of work that the Solid Waste Management District was able to do. So it's a credit to Environmental Services, to Michelle and her staff, and all the great work they did on behalf of the environment last year. But on a personal level, I just want to comment that Michelle, in particular, was able to lead this Division of Environmental Services at the same time that she was giving a huge amount of her time to our CARES Act team. So Michelle was a stalwart member of our CARES Act 142 million team. So I just want to thank Michelle for all of her hard work and the dedication. I know how many programs ran specifically through her and how much of her time it took. So just the fact that she was able to get all of this done with her team at the same time that she was committing to that, I just wanted to thank her personally, publicly for that effort.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, and thanks for bringing that up. And since we're talking about a personal note, Michelle and I have a personal relationship as it relates to the Village of Lincoln Heights. When I was a village manager, we did not have a recycling program. And she came in and worked with me, and we were able to develop it and to what it is today. So I thank you, Michelle, for being patient and guiding me through that. So thank you. Okay, with no other comments, we'll go to our next item. Thanks again, Michelle. Our next item is Cardinal Land Conservancy, Inc., to update on their activities and to discuss potential grant. I believe Andy might be on the line. Andy, yes? Yes. Hi, Andy, how are you?
Doing great, although I'm just experiencing a COVID quarantine for the first time, but we'll get through it. It's a high school basketballer, and I guess you gotta play in basketball, so you'll see Turpin and Moller quarantined, but no severe symptoms, just sticking at home, waiting it out.
What we'll be thinking about you, that's for sure. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. So I wanted to start by giving you a quick update. When I was, came before you guys, two years ago now, we were working on a project, and it was the mouth of the Little Miami Nature Preserve. And why we're here today is we, as a land trust, need to go and get a resolution of support to pursue state grant funds. And you guys gave us that resolution of support, and I'll be darned if those eagles, you know, this is the only eagle nest in the city of Cincinnati, and it's out by where the Little Miami goes into the Ohio River. And forever, I watched those eagles this spring, and I saw one baby, and saw one baby, and then right at the end, there were three all standing up. So I guess many were laying down. So these eagles, these bald eagles fledged three chicks this year, and it's just an amazing project. So we're, they're so active at that nest, we couldn't put up our eagle cam. So hopefully, we find a break in July or August. We're going to livestream this for all the citizens, and really, anyone in the country can watch them. So that's, that's the update on the project you supported last time, so thank you. Now, what we're working on now, just a quick overview of Cardinal. We're a land trust, we're throughout southwest Ohio. We work on a ton of projects. We're up to around 8,000 acres now that we protect. Much of that is conservation easements or agricultural easements, because we protect working lands. So in these seven counties, we have 180 members that were increasing. We have about 12 people on our board, and we have staff. Our mission is to preserve the natural habitats, waterways, and productive lands in southwest Ohio by working with people. You know, it's, it's something that we, we try and work hard to not do projects to people, but do it with them. So we've got an opportunity, and, you know, and I apologize about a tight timeline, you know, getting appraisals, because we have to have appraisals in place to apply for funds. You know, with the low interest rates, the appraisers are backed up, surveyors are backed up. We, we had to get an appraisal before we can find out if we have a deal, and we were able to get a deal together on a property that we'd like to apply for next Friday. And this property, what you see on this map is Winton Lake at the top, and this property is 26 acres of vacant land on Compton Road. And you'll see here's, it's a headwater to Winton Lake. And talking to my friends at Mill Creek Alliance and at Great Parks, you know, they love the idea of us working on this project to protect the headwaters. The Mill Creek does have some water quality problems, and protecting the stream here can help, you know, hopefully mitigate that if we're able to maintain the trees and the forested area around the creek. You'll see there's lots of topography here. I, you know, I just put this in, so you see where all those lines are. It's very hilly. This property isn't really conducive to development, and the landowner, who's owned it the past 15 years or so, has been working to make it his own nature preserve. But his family's moved on, and he's retired, and he's, would like to see it remain a nature preserve. So our plan is to put a one-mile trail in here and keep removing some of the invasives that he has tried on. And what I see, I didn't have this when I submitted the presentation before, just what it might look like from Compton Road, where the parking lot would be, and then a picture of the little woods and the creek and the property. So the creek is very nice. You know, it's, it's a nice little piece of nature in an area that, you know, we would like to provide access to more people in an urban setting. So it is unique with the steep slopes and the creek frontage and great potential for passive recreation and a trail that's walking distance from quite a few folks. What we're requesting from the State of Ohio, and again, this is the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program, and it was funded in the emergency budget this year, and it's funded again next year, because when people are looking to get outdoors more and get an escape from COVID, they're enjoying nature. And, you know, the governor and the state felt strongly that this program is one that they didn't want to see cut, and it's really a tiny amount of money. And of the 2.2 million that Hamilton County gets, we are going to request 225,000. And that is a reduced value because the property is worth more than that, and the landowner is donating the required 25% match in a bargain sale. So he's really enabling us to put this green space in place. So we're just seeking a resolution of support so we can apply for the grant. We're not asking you for funding, we're not looking for anything else. This is a required by the program so that when land trusts like Cardinal apply for money, they just want us to make sure we let the government agencies know how the money and where it will be spent. And that's, that's really it.
Okay, thank you, Andy. I will open it up. I have just a couple comments, but I'll open it up first. Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or questions? Vice President, yeah.
Thank you, Andy, for this presentation. I'm kind of just being brought up to speed on this. It sounds like it's a good thing. I just have one question. If we didn't apply for these, for this grant, then another area would, you know, get this money? Is this a competitive grant against? Is that, is this a competitive grant against other areas around the state or?
So the answer is maybe. So it is a competitive grant. What I don't know is who else is applying. I'm, I'm, you know, we're friends and partners with all the other people that apply for the green space grants. I believe there might be one that Mill Creek and Great Parks are going towards. But we all sit, I, and I sit on the INRAC, you know, I don't vote on this project, but, you know, we all support each other in going for these projects. So there have been times when not all of the money has been spent. So there is a chance to, the reason why the answer is it depends, that the money may not all of it be applied for and it will sit and wait a year.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that. So did you say that Hamilton County has allocated a certain dollar amount and then you all have to apply for portions of that?
So the State of Ohio split into 19 districts and the urban areas are their own district. And that allotment is right around $2.2 million a year that comes from the sale of bonds. And so so Hamilton County itself is District Two. And yeah, that that money is allocated each year and people apply for those, either grants or government agencies or cities apply for those to spend on green space projects.
Got it. So so the 2.2 is ours, but you have to still apply to that, for that money out of that allocation.
Yeah. So so the way it works, and and again, I sit on what's called the Natural Resources Advisory Council. They call them INRACs, and that's for District Two. And it's administered through the Ohio Public Works Commission. So that money sits at OPWC. And when we rank the projects out and the top projects get funded, then whoever is awarded has to apply to OPWC to get the money. It's not like it's sitting in Hamilton County.
I got it. I got it. And one last question. So the property owner that you referred to, is this the totality of the land he has out there?
It is. There are, you know, we always ask, what more can we do if there's a possibility to make the project bigger? But with the the timeline of the appraisers and, you know, not getting, hearing back from them for a couple of months until the end of December, we would love to look further. I know that that little development to the west of this, they have a the neighborhood group takes care of the creek. And we would like to work to purchase that from them so we can replant it and make it a forest and an attraction to them. And I know there's 10 acres to the north of the property that was for sale that we just didn't have time to negotiate and pull off a deal in time to submit a grant.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andy, just a more technical question. When you talk about the topography of that area and that there's going to be, of course, the trail, how close is the trail to the creek area? How, and I'm looking at drink and things like that.
Yeah, part of the, I I think the the trail design, there's a trail there now and it goes down adjacent to the creek. There's a flashiness to the creek that it, with all the, you know, unfortunately, development is good and bad. Good, people are walking distance from it. Bad, it increases runoff and and the stream will flood. So I think the trail that we have outlined, it does go down adjacent to the creek, but it's primitive. It's not concrete or paved and it can take some flooding. So it'll just be closed when it's flooded.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. So this will be on our agenda on Thursday for approval. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I hope you feel better.
Yeah, I'm okay for now. I'm hiding from them, so they got to find me.
All righty. Our our next order of business, we actually have us, I think Christopher might be on the line. Is there anyone on, oh, John, you're gonna, hi, John, how are you?
Doing well, Madam President. How are you?
Great. I've been kind of emailing you back. And first and foremost, I want to apologize that we were not able to get to you earlier as it relates to this resolution because it certainly is an important one, but we were able to manage to get it on the agenda to be able to follow through. So you have a few things you'd like to say.
Yeah, Madam President, just thank you for recognizing us. So the Earthworks regulations were put in place by the commissioners to address sediment erosion control on active construction sites as well as geotechnical issues on active construction sites as well. So the Earthwork Appeals Board is a way for a landowner or somebody who is actively doing construction on a site to be able to appeal a decision of the enforcing agency, which is the Hamilton County Solid Water Conservation District. So today we're seeking reappointment of two members whose terms have expired on the appeals board. So thank, Madam President, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Nelson, Vice President Reese?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dre House?
No questions.
Okay. We, is Christopher or Craig on the line, Mr. Nelson?
Madam President, no, they're not.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm going to combine, if it's okay, with the commissioners' item three and four, which indicate the resolution contains two names for the Earthworks Appeal Board. And the resolution, I'd make a motion, the resolution reappointing one member to the Hamilton County Earthquakes Appeal Board, Christopher Habel, and also a resolution reappointing one member to the Hamilton County Earthworks Appeal Board, Craig Abercrumbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it's done. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you do. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay. That's all we have on our agenda. We have an executive session that's coming up and I'll make a motion in a minute. But I would like to allow Vice President Reese, if you have anything you'd like to say before I make the motion for the executive session.
I just wanted to, I got one brief thing. We are still working on the task force. We were hoping to have something today. We did not have it today. We're still moving in, trying to get everything together. But we will be having that coming forward very soon.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
No comments.
Okay. I'd just like to comment that my chief of staff is back in the saddle and and doing very well. And I thank all of you for your well wishes. And I think he's already done that. So we're on the move in 2021. So at this point, I would like to make a motion, and it's a motion for executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property of competitive bidding or the sale of other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?